The discussion, just really to see where the discussion will go. If you are going to speak, know that this is being livestreamed and recorded. So, and we'll ask you to use a microphone. Rabbi Igor will take, bring the microphone to you. So just indicate to one of us if you would like to speak. It really gives me enormous pleasure to introduce one of our own members, Moya Sana, who is going to introduce the subject, "Marking the Cycles of Our Lives", which is the title that we came up with for this next hour or so. It emerged really from her very recently published book, "When I Grow Up: Conversations with Adults in Search of Adulthood". And I think what interested me was the seeing that there is a kind of influence of your own Judaism, having spoken to Rabbi Igor and another rabbi, on the book itself and on the thesis of the book in many ways. The book is based partly around Moya's own perceptions of growing up, but also with some really important interviews with different people. And she is going to, for a few moments, introduce the subject. She may or may not read from the book, we'll see how things go. And I am delighted to introduce her by telling you that she works for the NHS as a psychodynamic psychotherapist, journalist. Not for the NHS as a journalist, but she is also a journalist and an author. You may have seen some of her articles in The Times, The Guardian, New Scientist, Stylist and other publications. And "When I Grow Up" is her first book. So, Moya, welcome you and delighted to invite you.
Thank you. Thank you so much, everybody, for coming. What an honour to have what I hope will be a really fruitful discussion. It's lovely to see everybody, some people I know, some people I don't. I just wanted to share this from the prayers from yesterday evening's service, which really sort of, I think, sums up sort of a theme that we can think about today. Says, "This day demands of us an unsparing effort to face the truth about ourselves, naked and undisguised." And I suppose that's really the key link, I think, with my book. I wrote this book because I didn't feel like an adult and I felt that I very much was supposed to. And perhaps more importantly, a lot of the people I knew of all generations felt the same. It wasn't a sense of being in the world that united everybody that I knew. Some people just said, "Of course I'm an adult, what are you talking about?" But it did seem to be an experience that crossed generations and something that really linked a lot of different people from different walks of lives who'd had very different experiences. So, I wrote it at a very sort of fruitful time in my life, where I was in psychoanalysis myself, which is a very intensive form of therapy, where you're really doing a lot of self-exploration and getting to know your unconscious. I also noticed last night that we're to repent today for the sins that we committed consciously and unconsciously. And I thought, "Ah, yes, Freud knew what he was talking about." And I was also training to be a psychodynamic psychotherapist. And part of that training was to do an infant observation, which is one of the greatest privileges of my life, really. You observe for an hour a week, an infant from two weeks old up until, well, for the first year, and they can go on longer. And in this way, you see in real time how a baby grows up and develops. And of course, in my training, I was learning lots about different theories of psychological development as well. And thinking about what it really means to grow and develop and become mature, what adulthood really means. Because I think it means something very different from what a lot of us might assume, what the picture in our head that we might have of an adult. Maybe at this point, I'll just read one of my favourite quotes. Let me see, ah, yes. This is from Jana Williams, who's a child adolescent and adult psychoanalyst, who also supervises dozens and dozens of infant observations all over the world. And she says, "We are like trees." Through her work with observing babies and analysing patients, she has developed a profound understanding of what it means to grow up. And she shares with me a beautiful image that captures how she thinks about it. "If you look at the cross-section of a tree trunk," she says, "you will see the rings that mark the history of that tree. At its core, you find the smallest ring from its earliest days, with rings getting bigger and bigger as the tree has grown upwards and outwards, through to the newest ring covered up by the bark on the outside. We still contain a baby part, a child part, an adolescent part. They never go away. They are always there, under the bark, under our skin." She tells me how, as a therapist, "All my experience with children is very, very useful in my work with adult patients. And I think we're always finding the infant, the young child, the adolescent, in the patient." So, she was one of the people who I spoke to, one of the sort of expert adults in search of adulthood. I also spoke to neuroscientists, sociologists, zoologists, many different kinds of ologists, and also really fascinating people who were not necessarily experts in their field, but aged nineteen to ninety, people who had lived fascinating, tragic, uplifting lives and who really had something to say about the experiences that help us to grow through life and to keep developing and those experiences and tragic losses that might hold us back. So, I think I'll stop there. And I'll just say that I've had such fascinating conversations with people as I've been talking about the book in public settings, but also in, you know, just private conversations with friends and family. And it can be, well, I suppose it can be a very intimate sort of conversation if people have had early losses. And I suppose it's just important to mention that, you know, I'm sure a lot of people here are very hungry. And it might be worth just thinking about what you want to share before, if you're going to share a personal experience, just before you do, because it is being livestreamed. But I hope that we can have a really fruitful and lively discussion. There's lots to say.
Thank you so much, Moya. Don't go just for a moment, because I just wanted to ask you, in the book, you quote from Wilfred Bion, who says that "Growing up or maturation is such a hateful thing often to people. People detest the idea of growing up." And I wondered why you think that is the case?
Yeah, I mean, I can absolutely vouch for this as a patient in psychoanalysis. I mean, growth and change is really awful, mostly because it does involve an unsparing effort to face the truth about ourselves, naked and undisguised. And as, if we carry on, it says, "To acknowledge the many blemishes which disfigure us: greed and envy, self-pity and self-indulgence, cruelty and callousness, prejudice and arrogance, hatred and destructiveness." And, you know, as part of my analysis, I've had to see all of this in myself and it's really, really awful. But, you know, I think it's really important because the more aware you can be of the different parts of ourselves and all the different rings in our tree trunk, the less likely we are to act in these self-destructive ways. And I suppose you mentioned my conversation with Rabbi Igor and that was a really important sort of turning point in the book for me, although it happened when I'd already finished the last chapter. Because it really enlightened me as to how my thinking had been unconsciously shaped by my Jewish upbringing and everything I'd learnt at the LJS throughout my time as a student here and doing a bit of teaching and working for the volunteering at the drop-in. Because I think the idea of what it means to reach a kind of fulfilled state of adulthood does mean and involve being able to care for all the different rings in your tree trunk and to be able to make peace with all the different parts of yourselves, even greed, envy, self-pity, self-indulgence, cruelty, callousness, prejudice, arrogance, hatred and destructiveness. And, you know, peace is not getting rid of those parts of ourselves. It's what we do every yom kippur when we come to the synagogue and we reflect. And we try to sort of turn towards the truth. So, yeah, I suppose that's, that's part of why it's all so hateful.
Perhaps we could just pause for a moment there. I know there's plenty more that I would like to ask you in terms of, you know, the stages that we go through of growing up. And perhaps you'll come back to that a bit later. But is there anybody who would like just to come in and reflect on, on some of the themes that, or not, that Moya has touched on? Anybody desperate to speak? Is there somebody?
I was just going to say, I mean, obviously it's a huge subject, but that actually I had the opposite experience. All I ever wanted to do was grow up. And so it was partly to be taken seriously, partly to be listened to. But also it was to have that, to have the experiences and to have the, and the freedom of being able to think and to learn. So, it was just slightly the opposite of what you said was the, what most people do.
Yeah, I mean, what, I think adulthood in its sort of most liberated form is, is that. I suppose the kind of growth that Bion is talking about here is the sort of growth that happens in psychoanalysis, really, where it can be quite painful. But I think what you're talking about is a kind of adulthood that has really fallen out of fashion. I mean, if you look around, you know, greeting card shops and what they write on pencil cases and notebooks, it's all sort of never grow up. You know, that sort of, I think adulthood needs a bit of rebranding and that's part of what I've been trying to do with this book, really, is to say actually maturity and responsibility, you know, fulfilling intimate relationships, these all bring such value to our lives. And when we say things like, "Oh, I never want to grow up", actually, we're, we're sort of dismissing a really important part of our existence. And I mean, people do it with all different life stages, particularly old age. Sort of, I, I think the way we think about older people in our society is, is really dire.
As one of the older ones, may I say, you feel exactly the same inside. Some of us do the same insecurities and questions. I don't go in for analysis, but I assure you, plenty of it still carries on.
Yeah, that's what I'm learning.
Hello, my name's Annette Lawson and I'm eighty-six. So I think I qualify also as an older, older person here. But as a young woman, I was a senior scientific member of Medical Research Council and did a lot of observation of babies. And I very much agree with what you had to say about that. In fact, travelled all over the United States, looking at infant growth in laboratories. It is absolutely fascinating and does lead to a different way of looking at the world. So far as analysis is concerned, I've had two, one Jungian and one Freudian. So I am in favour, very much, of psychoanalytic perspective on the world and on individuals. But I'm also a sociologist. So I'm much more interested, in a sense, in the group and in the collective, rather on the lines of what we've been hearing about today. But it all does come down to the individual. And I'm going to share something that I couldn't understand when my analyst said it to me. So it was in the Jungian one, which I had in my sixties, going through a very painful divorce. And she said to me one day, "I think you do not feel disabled enough to be lovable." And I can, I was so shocked, I honestly couldn't understand the words. I mean, I couldn't, I couldn't get, what does she mean? And I felt like there were double negatives and all the kinds of things going on. And I had, or don't have now because she died, a learning disabled sister who grew up not into a very successful adulthood because she then became seriously mentally ill with schizophrenia. So she lived most of her life as an adult in institutional care, one kind or another. And that was what my analyst was referring to. Because if you have a disabled sibling, you grow up with somebody who is always, in a sense, more needy than you are. And it is quite easy to not feel adequately loved. So that's a kind of big hurdle to get over. And maybe it's a good example of what you were talking about, the layers, the onion skins, the tree bark. That at my sixties, somebody could be saying to me, "This fact in your life is actually making you feel this, this other, other way." So I think I very much, I haven't read your book, I'm going to read it. But I think the idea of, of when you become an adult, I find actually now, in this stage of my life, actually it is, in a sense, a freedom to re-explore and to grow up. I am madly irritated, I find not to be so angry, with the kind of me-ness, the self-identity problems that we face. The kind of, "You are, if you're black, that's what you are. If you're trans, that's what you are." You know, if you're a Jew, maybe that's what you are. And it's, 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 it kind of misses on the collective of the similarities and not always on the differences, that I find. Perhaps I'm a right old way of looking at the world, I don't know.
Gosh, thank you so much, how fascinating. I think what, I mean, I wouldn't dare to comment on what your analyst might have meant, especially since they were a Jungian. But I would, what it made me think about was how we can use the others in our lives as a kind of container for the parts of ourselves that we struggle to bear. So it might be that you, one sees oneself as a carer and the person in your life is the person who needs the care. And that part of you that needs care goes completely unloved and uncared for because it's almost like you've got rid of it from your mind. And I suppose sort of for me, part of analysis has been making contact with all those different parts, the parts that I can't bear, like the parts that need care, the part that feels dependent. Yeah, so I think that's part of what it sort of brings to our lives. But also how incredible that, you know, this person said something to you more than twenty years ago and you're still thinking about it. I think it's just such a valuable experience. And I think it's also very interesting what you said about identity, because I think something that happens a lot today, maybe always, is that the sort of names of our identities, whether that's your race or culture, religion, sexuality, gender, or mental health diagnosis, gets used to close something down and stop thinking and feeling. You know, "I've got this, so I am this." Whereas I think those sorts of labels are much more useful if they're not sort of imposed from above, but understood from underneath and used to put something into words that can then be explored for what it means for the individual. And something that Jana Williams, the lady who I quoted, said to me was, "That's the point of understanding. You're standing under something. You're not looking on it from above and labelling it as something. You're standing underneath it, looking up and trying to work your way through it." So, yeah, I do think that's something that's really missing from a lot of the way we think about ourselves today. And maybe that's because we're all so unbearably complex and actually it's easier just to close things down with labels and not think about what's going on underneath. But maybe other people disagree. I just wanted to ask, I'm a, I'm a teacher. I spend my waking hours with children. And the one thing I always say to my children is, "Don't grow up too fast." They're very little, I'm primary school, so they're very little. And I firmly stand by that. But, you know, your book sounds super interesting. I'm sure me and my mum will read it. But I want your view on kind of modern day growing up because we live in a society where children, young children, I mean, I'm clinging on to my twenties by a string at this point. But I'm kind of, there's the battle, there's a really big battle now between growing up. When is growing up? When, when do children grow up? Because I've certainly got children in my class who are five, who I look at and I think, "Oh my gosh, you're so grown up." And I'm constantly telling them, "Enjoy how old you are, enjoy your youth." But they're past that already. They're past, they're five going on fifteen. So it's just kind of your view on modern day growing up. When does that start? What does that look like? How do you deal with situations where children are growing up too fast? Because of course you say, "Growing up is important, it absolutely is." I mean, I'm, I feel that for myself. I'm at that pivotal moment to my twenties and thirties where I'm like, "I am a grown up now." But actually, there are many people who battle with that. And there are many people who battle with what is growing up. And especially with our teenagers nowadays, what does that look like for them? Yeah, great question. And how lucky your children are to have you to help them work this all out. I think one of the things that really came through with the interviews that I did with the so-called ordinary people was that a lot of people had had experiences very early in their life, whether that was a terrible loss or just sort of difficult dynamics in the family or different kinds of abuse, including neglect, where they had had to grow up very quickly and they had had to act the adult when they were still a child. And what was very noticeable was that this left them in adulthood with a sense of not having grown up, of having sort of raced to the finish line too early and then feeling like something really important was missing. And I think that's part of what happens if you have to grow up too quickly. That said, I do think that, I suppose, an important part of growing up for children is sort of playing at being an adult. You know, for little girls to prance around in their mum's high heels or experiment with makeup and sort of, almost like trying on adulthood, like fancy dress. And that can be part of play. One wonderful psychoanalyst who I spoke to for the book called Margot Waddell had, I think it was a young patient or it might have been a relative, who said that when she grew up, she wanted to be adult. And I suppose that sort of, we all sort of wrestle as we grow up as children with who we're going to be. And I think it's sort of one of the great humiliations of being a child is that you're not an adult. And you have to sort of make peace with this somehow in yourself and accept that mummy and daddy are the adults. And I guess people, all children will have their own experience of that. But I'm sure having a thinking, feeling other like you to really sort of be with them where they are and help them to think about the value of this particular life stage that they're in now and will really help with that. I think something that a lot of us do with our lives is we sort of race, we race through to the next chapter without really living the chapter that we're in. And I think that's something that analysis does help with, any kind of therapy, because it's about the experience of the moment. But you know, this is something that different religions and philosophies and cultures have been trying to work out and explore and find different ways of managing. I mean, there, there are questions that I think if you're lucky, you explore for your whole life. And that, spoiler alert, that is sort of where I get to with the book. You know, I now, having been so hard on myself and not feeling like an adult and feeling like I hadn't grown up, I now hope I never reach that finish line and that I'm, it's something that I can continually work on. And I spoke to this ninety-year-old woman called Pog, who's just an absolute boot. And we're still in touch and, maybe I have a quote from her. I ask her what she feels are the main ways in which her mind feels different now from earlier in her life. "I'm not sure I can answer that without thinking about it," she says. I tell her to please take the time she needs. And after some moments pass, she tells me, "Peace, I suppose, and not having, not having to strive anymore. Not really keeping up appearances. I don't mean clothes, but tranquility. Peace is the word, I think. That's about as far as it goes. All I can think of is that word, peace. I just can't get away from it." "This is what it means for her to be in a grown-up state of mind," I say. "Yes," she says, "yes, truly accepting what you are and what you've become."
Hi. Okay. Hi, yeah, I was just thinking about your analogy with the trees and the rings, growing up and this feeling of if you've had to take on too much responsibility as a child, that there's something missing. And I was kind of picturing these empty spaces where certain rings should be in a person and this feeling of kind of emptiness. And when I was in my analysis, I was feeling like these were just voids and there was something missing. But I found that when I kind of strengthened my kind of persona and started seeing adulthood as just being able to protect the inner parts and just kind of being your own parent, I found that these parts were actually there. And it was mostly through kind of safely regressing in a way. safely regressing in a way and finding that inner child and that playfulness and being able to do things that I wasn't able to do as a child that I probably should have. But acting it out in like a safe way, in a conscious way, not just acting like a natural child, which is what happens, I think, if you don't consciously go back. But yeah, I just wanted to share that image of the ring.
I also wanted to speak a little bit on the idea of like, I think it was the first contribution saying of, I actually really wanted to grow up. And I think this is because we don't give children the kind of respect and deference that they deserve. We don't, their thoughts and feelings are often dismissed when oftentimes, I'm sure the lady who's a teacher can attest to this, that sometimes children have the most like insightful and intelligent responses to things. And I think it's so common for us to just dismiss that. And I think it creates that feeling of just like, I just want to be an adult. I just want you to take me seriously. I just want you to listen to me. And it's like, we kind of randomly decide at which point we start to do that. Like, we don't, we don't grow up in this kind of linear way, but it's the way that it's viewed that there's like, you get to, you know, eighteen or twenty-one and suddenly you're an adult. And that's just not how it works. It's not, it's a process as you've been talking about. That's all I really wanted to say.
Yeah, I would just thank you so much for those comments. How fascinating. I agree, the bit of the analysis where you feel so empty and you're terrified that actually there's nothing there is the worst bit for me. And I think it's sort of, it's part of why that analytic relationship is so valuable if one is able to feel safe enough to kind of go there and then discover what is actually there underneath the emptiness. I've never been in a room with so many people who've had an analysis since my training. It's wonderful. With what you said, I'm sorry, I don't know your name, about children, I think that's absolutely true. And I think it's, it's something suffered by many different groups in society. A big part of the book is about listening. My listening to others, my learning to listen to myself, and the kind of listening that is necessary from a parent for their child. But also, I interviewed a sociologist who runs a care home for people with dementia. And the kind of listening that she provides for her residents is very, very moving. So I think it's not just something that relates to children. I think it's something that we're just not very good at, because we're not very good at listening to the vulnerable parts of ourselves either.
We'll take a few questions at the same time and then that's my comment.
I've just turned sixty, so I still think I'm growing up.
Not at all.
I was, I might be biblical for a minute. The Sidra that I find interesting is Lethlaqah, where Abraham was asked to get up and go. And in many ways, I think get up and go is what is making me be an adult. But there are two extra words which are interesting. When Abraham makes a camp, when he leaves the camp, he used the word "vayeteh" is used, which means to pull up all the stakes and move, keep moving. But it's also the Sidra where the word "evmuna", which means faith, is how it's translated. But I think King James uses the word steadfast, because it actually means pin to something. And so I think in the Sidra of Lethlaqah, we've got a number of tensions. The get up and go, the vayeteh, which means we just keep going, pull up things and keep going, and we have the evmuna, the fixed. Ultimately, I don't think Abraham ultimately became an adult until he bought some land and had to bury his wife. Interestingly, we don't mention it very much, but he then has a second life, a number of other children after that. And some argue rabbis, perhaps that was in writing the role that he did late earlier in his career with Ha'adah. But that's another interesting story. It's intriguing. When he becomes an adult, to some degree, his story ends.
Hello. And congratulations, by the way. I really looked forward to reading the book. I was one of those children who had to grow up very fast. Developmentally, I feel a very different place in my life than people might. I'm twenty-three. I feel like I don't know how to go back to that time. And as a psychotherapist, I assume maybe you've heard of the inner child work and listening to people, the kid inside of people's psyche. How much do you think adulthood is getting in touch with and listening to that little kid in there, especially if you really don't know how to access her? I don't know where she is. I don't know where she's going. I don't really remember being her.
Right, perhaps I'll start with you, because it's so personal, and then I'll go back. I'm sorry to hear about your experiences. I, I think sometimes the way we talk about an inner child, because it's a sort of label from above, almost. It can kind of blunt the edges of what it really means to be in contact with all the different circles in your tree trunk. I don't think it's something that you can kind of consciously do. It's not really an action. It's an incredibly nuanced and sensitive and invaluable process that with luck happens in a relationship with a thinking, feeling other who is using their mind to help you understand yours. I think, you know, although you maybe feel older than your years, now is a really great time to start exploring that part of yourself with somebody else. Because, you know, there's a lot of hope. And, you know, if you can find the right person to go on that journey with, then you know, it can really change the rest of your life and yeah, good luck. Yes, thank you for bringing us back to the Jewish stuff. It's very interesting what you say. I suppose building an adult life is about navigating that tension between knowing when to up sticks and leave and when to take root. And noticing what is lost when you up sticks and leave and what is lost when you take root. I suppose this is sort of, uppermost in my mind is kind of marriage, career, baby, all of these things, starting a family. You know, all of these things bring losses and gains to our lives and I suppose we're just on a path of constantly trying to work out what it is that we want. And I think probably too much of one and too much of the other is is going to leave you lacking in some way. But it's very interesting what you said about Abraham, because I think what really comes through in the Yom Kippur services is that although, you know, we are really awful and we have many blemishes which disfigure us, including greed and envy, self-pity, self-indulgence, cruelty, callousness, prejudice, arrogance, hatred and destructiveness, we also have the capacity to repair. And, you know, I like that idea that that's what Abraham was doing with that last chapter of his life.
I'm just wondering how useful the term being a grown up is, really. It just seems to aggregate so many different things between your, the internal process of acquiring experience and wisdom and knowledge and the external process of what public expectation is of your responsibilities and duties, et cetera, et cetera. And I just, I just think that it's a false concept, really. And if one just broke it down into the different levels of maturation, the different phases and and it would become clearer to people what's expected of them, what they can expect of themselves, what there are. The description you gave of the woman, you know, who as she went and was, became older, she let go because she realised that she had no power to change it, really. And that's just an external thing. It's not really part of the maturation of understanding yourself and the world around you. Well, it is to a limited extent about that. So I think what I'm really saying is, I very rarely think that one phrase that aggregates things is wrong, but I think being a grown up is a false concept.
Interesting. I did sort of have to traverse that, you know, and think, oh my gosh, am I writing a book about a totally meaningless phrase? And I concluded that I wasn't, but I would just say that I think with self-understanding, self-understanding is often the route to change, to actual change, in my experience, and I've seen that with my patients as well. I also just wanted to say that I think sometime, and in that way maybe, there is a real overlap between the internal process of growing up and being able to sort of establish a grown-up life that isn't just a kind of carapace or shell that actually has some of the values of adult life that we've been talking about, like liberation and peace and meaning through responsibility. So the third chapter, no, the second chapter of the book is called contents insurance. Because I didn't have contents insurance. And I felt it sort of became a kind of symbol for me of my not being an adult, that I didn't have contents insurance. But I also came to see it as a metaphor for a kind of internal contents insurance, which is a sort of sense of, I suppose resilience, which I think is a very overused word, but I don't mean it in a harsh, super ego-y way. I mean it in a sense of being able to contain oneself and to survive difficulties and to grow from them. I think that's what sort of contents insurance means to me now. But another spoiler alert, as I went through the process of writing the book, the sort of hard time I was giving myself about not being a grown up just sort of faded into the distance and I don't really care anymore. And I bought contents insurance. Probably a total waste of money, but it's sort of, I think these, these words have a lot more meaning when you're kind of struggling with them and grappling with them and and then once you're able to work through something, they sort of become a bit unnecessary.
I'm just thinking about the rings on that tree trunk. And as a baby, as a young adult, a young baby, you want protection and you feel that people around you are going to give you that protection from your parents, from family members, from friends, from neighbours. And the second layer of the ring of that trunk is that when you realise that not everybody is the same and they don't have the same values or qualities that you expect. And so that you get disappointed. And then the, as you grow onto the next ring, then you say, well, I have to put it right. How can I, you know, how can I put this right? My disappointment in these people. And then you sort of, you know, you're going through all these cycles within yourself, like a turmoil within yourself. And, you know, you try to put things right, what has been disappointment for you. And you go through this turmoil in your life and you never, you try to find a way of healing what's, the disappointments that you have come across. And you find that you have to then be strong and not to rely on other people to make you happy. You have to find your own happiness and not be disappointed.
One of the things that my analyst said to me, which I've never forgotten, is yes, you really struggle with feeling disappointed, don't you? Well, who doesn't? But at the same time, what a valuable thing to have told me. Because it made me think that disappointment is actually a really necessary part of life. And how we digest that experience can determine how we grow up or don't. I think that feeling disappointed can be a really valuable experience. And that something that, again, I don't think we're very good at in this culture is valuing difficult experiences, difficult emotional experiences. Because you learn so much about yourself when you survive disappointment. You learn what you want, what you will tolerate, what you won't tolerate, the people that you want in your life and the people that you don't, what you're doing to those people by maybe trying to make them into the people that you want them to be, rather than the people that they are. You know, I suppose Freud would have said that one of the earliest disappointments that we experience is that in a healthy family, your mother is your mother and not your wife, and your father is your father and not your husband. You know, that is crushing for an infant to realise that. So I think, yeah, I've kind of gone on a bit of a tangent, but I suppose I wouldn't say it's important to get to a point in life where you don't feel disappointed, but that it is important to work towards a point where you can tolerate disappointment and find meaning in it, so that you can work out who you are and what you want, the kind of life that you're going to lead. It's like, one of the other things that Beyon said was that people often go to analysis, hoping that the analyst will take away their pain. But actually, what the process is about is developing a greater capacity to bear pain so that we can actually live fulfilling emotional lives that allow all emotions into our mind. And yeah, I think disappointment comes under that chapter.
Moya, can I just come in here for a moment? Because one of the people who you interviewed in your book was Rabbi Jeffrey Newman, who was appointed an elder in the Extinction Rebellion organisation. And I think he talks about that sort of, I mean, well, it's not his word, disappointment about having to deal with hospital visits at a certain age, but that's not what brings meaning to your life. Then he talks, and I think we've got a slide of it, very beautifully about those kind of qualities that, that one would expect perhaps an elder to have. And I just wondered if you could just say a few words about that. Perhaps I can bring up the slide with Rabbi Newman's work. Perhaps I can bring up the slide with Rabbi Newman's words. And, um, also I think we've got somebody on Zoom who after that wants to say something. So Ines, in a minute, I'll ask you to turn on your camera, if that's all right.
I'll just sort of introduce this by saying that part of the book, um, in the, the chapters, on the later chapters of life is about how we respond to the fact that many of us don't want to grow old and that, um, old age is not valued. Um, and one of those ways is total denial uh, and sort of trying not to grow old. Um, and I think most of us would probably agree that if you're lucky, you do get to grow old. So there's a real sort of internal conflict there that doesn't make much sense. Um, and what was so striking about speaking to Rabbi Jeff was just how much he values this life stage, um, for what it is and how much it's brought to his life to be in this new life stage, not as an older person trying to be a younger person, but as an older person living where he is now. Um, shall I, shall I read? Right. Rabbi Newman says that now his life is about learning even more about living in the moment and discovering what it means to be of service. His and his wife's bodies are changing. They are having to experience the aging process to deal with physical problems. And yet, what I think we are both finding is that we need to ensure this part of our lives is not merely about hospital visits and seeing doctors, which happens inevitably more than it did 20 years ago. That's not what gives meaning to life. Meaning comes through a deepening of engagement. So I think that's what's happening at the moment. This is what being of service seems to mean to him. Everything now has a reason for me to learn about it in order to try and see what do we need to do to bring about change, to help the world to be a bit more how we would like it to be. And, um, he's sort of doing this through being part of the eldership circle of Extinction Rebellion. Um, and eldership is a sort of idea from indigenous cultures that, um, has brought a lot of meaning to him. And I asked what eldership means and he doesn't have a clear definition to give me. It's something he is still thinking about, still working out, just like with me in adulthood. But through all his thinking and meeting, discussing and reflecting, he has arrived at a few different characteristics of being an elder. Obviously, it's got something to do with wisdom. And that's why you wouldn't ever say or think that you're an elder, because it's also got something to do with humility. All that you can know is that you're working towards it, not that you've ever got there. It's something to do with curiosity, with kindness and awareness, sensitivity, courage. Some of the people who might be accepted as being elders may not have all of them, but you've probably got to have a good cluster of them. All that you can know is that you're working towards it, not that you've ever got there. With a sigh, I understand that what is true of eldership is true of growing up too.
Thank you, Moya. Um, Ines, do you want to come in? Ines is speaking from Germany, am I right?
Can we hear her? Oh, okay. Oh, that's a shame, Ines.
Hello, it's been a very interesting discussion and I've really enjoyed your comments and everybody's contributions. I was just wondering, uh, to look at it from a different point of view, if, let's say adulthood is whatever childhood isn't, so we define it as against childhood. Uh, whether both terms are sort of culturally constructed in the sense that, is there some absolute standard that, uh, those concepts have meaning and apply to a timescale and so forth? Or is it a set of assumptions that people in a certain society have? So for example, uh, if you were from an elite Roman family and you were male, I think there was probably an idea of your, this word applies to this stage of your life, this word applies to this stage, there are certain, there are certain things you do at different ages and so forth. But if you were a woman, didn't really apply to you because by the age, time you're 12 or 13, perhaps you're a betrothed or even having, even having children. Uh, so does that mean that only elite Roman males have childhood? And here's what it looks like. And other people who are elite Roman females, they don't have that. And if you're not elite at all, it doesn't apply to you either way. So in terms of the, the comment you were making, is adulthood a false concept? Maybe it's all a cultural assumption. Of course, it has reality to us because we're brought up in a society that has these ideas. But maybe they don't have any sort of absolute value and they have a cultural meaning. You see what I'm saying? Does that help in this discussion?
Yeah, I think it's a fascinating perspective and it's one that certainly comes into the book through different academic ways of, of thinking about the world. Um, I mean, I think it's, it's cultural, it's also individual. Um, it's going to, it varies from country to country, um, part of the world to part of the world. Uh, that, that's part of what I found so fascinating about writing the book. Um, I think there are, I, I think it is possible following that road to sort of, if you go far enough, you end up emptying everything of any meaning. And I, I think that's something that, um, is important not to do with ideas around adulthood and growing up, um, and development. Um, and that there are some ideas that seem to cross cultures and, um, cross different ways of thinking about things. I wonder if I can find it. It's another Bion idea. Um, because Jana Williams, who I've mentioned a couple of times, um, she has supervised these infant observations all over the world. Um, and she says that actually there's something that is not sort of culture dependent, um, that is fundamental to an infant growing up. And I think to developing the kind of internal contents insurance that we all need to sort of survive as adults. Um, she, she, I'll read. She has learned and taught about seminar, about infants in Italy, France, Spain, Turkey and Latin American countries. And so she knows something about what links the early life of babies in different parts of the world. Um, she tells me in a thoughtful, gentle, rhythmic voice, it has been very interesting to hear about infants in different cultures. But although certain aspects might be different because of the culture, I think there is something that I have found that is very central to infancy that doesn't depend on the culture, the feeling of being held. The feeling of being held is understood by psychoanalysts, not simply as a physical experience. While the baby's body is held in the parent's arms, the baby's mind is held in the parent's mind, bringing a sense of comfort, of groundedness, of continuity. And when a parent is psychologically healthy and able, they will, through empathy and understanding, use their mind to help the infant to process some of the feelings and difficulties the child has not yet developed enough to make sense of. There is a beautiful name for this, which has filled me with a kind of warm fascination from the first time I heard it, reverie. The revolutionary psychoanalyst Wilfred Bion used the word reverie to describe, among other things, what I understand is a kind of loving conversation between a parent and their baby that doesn't take place through words alone. Williams says, I think real reverie is the parent saying, I wonder what the matter is? Could it be this? Could it be that? And the infant perceives this attention and this attempt to understand him. And I think that's, um, well, I suppose it's something that people also find in religion and in the synagogue. And it's certainly something that I found through the LJS, I suppose throughout my life, but especially over the pandemic when we weren't able to come here. And I think those of us who attended the online services found something very moving in the continuity and the holding and the music, um, in the sort of sense of community that couldn't take place in the, in the physical arms of the synagogue. But we still felt very held by you both, I think.
I wonder, I was, I was going to suggest that we end, and perhaps we still can, because I think we're coming to the end of our discussion, lest there's anybody else in the congregation who wishes to contribute. Yes. So let's have our two last contributors. And then, Moya, perhaps I can ask you just to end with the last slide with, which reflects your conversation with Rabbi Igor, if that's all right.
Be lovely, yeah.
Um, I used to work, when I did work, quite a lot in the family justice system. Um, and I came across a great many people who looked like adults, uh, but behaved like children, very often in ways worthy of the junior school playground. Plainly, they were affected by the stress of the litigation. But I wondered, what, um, are the forces that prevent or disincentivize growing up? And is there a connection with living in a society in which few celebrities are valued for their age, knowledge and wisdom, other possibly than David Attenborough?
Yeah, I mean, my heart goes out to those people really, because I don't think anybody sort of wants to behave in that way. Um, you know, to cause all sorts of problems for themselves. And, yeah, I tend to see this kind of behavior as a, a failure of containment somewhere along the line. Um, so, you know, for whatever reason, that person hasn't been able to grow up. Um, and, and I tend to think in sort of terms of capacity. What do they have the capacity for? Um, and to think of sort of violence and criminality as symptoms of something quite dysfunctional. Um, because I suppose, you know, what this book is telling us is that we all have these different parts inside us. Um, we all have the capacity to behave in these different ways. And with luck, we have a good enough start in life that we don't, that we develop the capacity not to need to. Um, but it, it sounds like really fascinating and important work that you were doing. Sorry, we can't hear more about it, really.
Um, yeah, Moya, I guess asking for a friend. Um, what advice would you give to an absolute man-child who does struggle, um, with maybe wants to be more of an adult, but whether it's being on time for work, potentially a tidy room or maintaining a relationship? And it's got to a stage in their life where they've definitely realized that they need to make a change, but every time they try, they give up and go skating or go for a run because that's a lot more fun and they know they can achieve it.
Hmm, I too have been for runs to escape myself. Um, well, first of all, I would say as a psychodynamic psychotherapist, I don't give advice. And second of all, I would say get an analysis. Um, oh yes, I was going to read a bit, wasn't I? Right.
If this is all right, then, Moya, we'll, we'll close with just your, a little bit of your conversation with Rabbi Igor.
Okay, this is, um, the, prior to this paragraph, I meet up with a young man who was a drug addict when I interviewed him for the first chapter. And he's really turned his life around over the course of my writing the book. Um, and it's very, very moving and I learned a lot about him. I mean, the experience was very moving, I don't know if the book is, but I learned a lot from him about what it really means to grow up. Um, and he says, you have to start those conversations with yourself and you become more of an honest person. I don't feel like I'm hiding anything because I'm not hiding from myself. Not hiding from himself, this is it really, isn't it? This is what growing up is. That is what it means to become an adult. This is what I've been trying to say for the last hundred thousand words. Um, this is what it means to live in peace. I understand this in a new way when I learned from my rabbi, thank Igor, uh, that the root of the Hebrew word for peace, shalom, is the same as the root of the Hebrew word for completeness or wholeness, shalem. The roots of these words are the same in Arabic. This is a truth that courses through the veins of humanity and always has done. We cannot live in peace while we are hiding from or at war with parts of ourselves. Not hiding from yourself is different from the notion of finding yourself, as the old cliche goes. Finding yourself implies there is a solid, coherent, single and unchanging self to be found, a happy ending. Trying not to hide from yourself is to, sorry, trying not to hide from yourself is to be engaged in an ongoing process, to accept there is no end but death and to be open to a completely different way of being, one I am still grappling with. I won't read the actual end of the book, so you still have some motivation to, to read it.
Moya, thank you so much for responding to questions, opening up discussion in a really very profound way. We're incredibly grateful to you. I hope the congregation doesn't mob you, uh, at the end of this study session. I'm sure you'll tell them that if they, I'm very happy to be mobbed.
Thank you very much, everybody. It's been so fascinating hearing all about your, um, thoughts and reflections and experiences. What a valuable, uh, opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you to you for opening up so much. Thank you, Moya. Um, the program for the rest of the day is on the screen now. Uh, 2:15 Rabbi Igor will lead a parallel breakout session upstairs in the Assembly Hall entitled The Journey of Repentance. And our additional service will start shortly at 2:15.